Jonathan, we're recording?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled council meeting for the city of Nisswa to September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty. It is seven P M. And would you all join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of American America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda this evening is the consent calendar. Are there any questions by the council? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, move the consent calendar as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Johnson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? That motion carries. Open forum. Please, please come to the podium, state your name for the record and...
Oh, for the record, my name's Troy Scheffler. I was on the record for the special session concerning the mayor. I'm sure you all remember me because I'm the talk of the town now. So, being that there was some loose ends with Gabri here now, I'd left that meeting after exercising my first amendment right to come here upon invitation from all you guys. And when I left, Mr. Johnson made a little comment about me. And this was really interesting because this entire meeting was called in an emergency over following the law and professionalism. In fact, you made that a huge point of your spiel, Mr. Johnson. So after I exercised my right upon calling by you guys to appear to that meeting, took time of my day to exercise my opinion, I left. And as you may recall, and the recording of the meeting certainly does, a lady came up after me, mentioned my name, and you interjected quite rudely even with her. But what you said is, when she mentioned my name, you said, "He already left." Shocker. What's so shocking about a person entering the lion's den with a bunch of uniformed officers to make an objective view upon a meeting that you called mayor pro tem at the time, that you needed to disparage me to the public? You want to answer that right now, please?
What I will do is, I will offer up an apology. I was out of line by saying that. The other thing I would say is, great thing about America is we're all entitled to our opinions and I don't have to agree with yours, so.
Well, that's fine. Do you find that it's somewhat chilling to the first amendment when a council member is disparaging the public after they left? Because it would have been nice if you had something to address with me that you should have done it to my face, because that's a matter of professionalism, Mr. Johnson. And when I come in here to express my opinion, and when I'm gone, you make a comment like that, acting like I'm a coward. You don't know who I am. You don't know my feelings about the police.
You don't know who I am either, so that's fair enough.
Let him speak. He's got his time.
Yep.
You have no idea my pedigree. When I was in here talking about police officers, I support police officers more than anyone in this council. How many times have you guys gotten in a knife fight for a police officer? How many arrests have you made? I've made more than I could count. I'll guarantee you I've gotten more use of force issues, fighting with people under arrest, than probably all of your officers combined. So I don't really appreciate the comments. You know what's really interesting about this whole thing is, is I've learned a great deal of the backwards politics that's going around here, a great deal. And what's interesting about it is kind of a double edged sword. There's a lot of people talking in small towns. And I've heard a lot of dirt about a lot of people from situations of police chiefs being married, having a little extramarital stuff going on, to police chiefs using resources to use squad cars as taxis. I mean, this is absurd. And let's stick to your police chief and my experience with him. I came in here after coming into City Hall to address a few issues, ask a few questions of your city administrator, city clerk, and you know what? They're very professional. And see, when people are professional like that, I have no problem. When people are unprofessional, now all of a sudden it gets personal. And again, you have no idea my history, but you picked a fight, and it's not over yet. So as far as your officer, I spoke where your police chief spoke with him. First thing he says in a private meeting room over there, and this is after you guys already started talking about me, so I'm assuming he had a little time to look into a few things. And his judgment was, and this is your police chief, his judgment was, the first thing to tell me is if he can commit a misdemeanor in front of me. And for such poor judgment to think that I wouldn't record everything I talked to a police chief like that, and that's beyond his attitude in the first place, because he was incredibly rude to me. And now, I'm not sure what kind of police chief or police force in general that you guys want to employ, but one that comes to someone like me and asks me to be complicit in committing a crime, wrong answer. That one's not over. I'll deal with the post board. We'll go up that route. You guys can deal with however you want, because I've reported it to you guys. We'll see what happens. We'll see what following law and professionalism and how exacting you guys really are about it. See, I'm a firm believer that it's not the position you hold. My belief is it's the character you have. And I haven't seen that very much around here, with the exceptions I've already noticed or noted. Now, I already commented about the mayor last, what, two weeks ago or whatever? I made a comment. I did not appreciate how you approached law enforcement on the street there. I get their concerns, but at the same time, it's a shame that you guys covered up the whole spirit behind it. There's an incredible problem with three seventy-one. I moved up here three years ago. The first thing I heard is stay out of Nisswa. Stay out of Nisswa. You don't want to deal with the cops there, they're looking for anything. And since that, that meeting that you wanted to pick a fight with me on, I've been going up and down three seventy-one. Every single time I've gone up that highway, I've seen a Nisswa cop. Is that what Nisswa hired their police officers to do? Just sit and poach people for petty misdemeanors? That's absurd. That's not policing. That's not what anybody wants. You guys don't get phone calls that say harass people on three seventy-one. They want people to patrol. And what's worse is that you guys got this little union between Pequot and Nisswa. This whole issue with the mayor started because two Pequot squads were in the south side of Nisswa. I mean, do you guys have any idea of the liability? Here's your city attorney sitting right there. Maybe you guys should question that. And by the way, got something with you, city attorney. We've dealt with each other before, haven't we? And I don't appreciate the comment that you're spreading amongst public records that you know all about my tactics. So I'd like to question you right now, what are my tactics? Because I haven't done anything illegal. I've exercised my constitutional rights, and it doesn't seem like anybody here gives a damn about those. So what is it, city attorney? What did you mean about my tactics?
I'm not here to answer your questions. Please move on. You're on a clock.
Uh huh. So then, this all evolves into, you guys posted this thing on your YouTube page. Got a lot of comments. I gave you a call about it. You didn't call me back, did you, Johnson?
I did not.
Shocker. Yeah, I stopped by your house, because that's my right. You haven't trespassed me. I'll definitely abide by your wishes if you don't want me to show up again. Ring your doorbell. You didn't answer the door, did you, Johnson?
I didn't know you were at my house.
Hmm, yeah, well, the windows were open. I guess you could have called me, and it would have made things a lot easier. But see, when you're telling me that shocker and acting like I'm a coward, I was outside talking with the chief of Pequot. Oh, which by the way, your chief of Nisswa lied to the public about only one officer in that plethora, hodgepodge patchwork of police officers that showed in uniform with only one purpose, and that was to dogpile an elected official. That's all that was. And they're using public resources from all over the place to drive their squads, bring their guns. That's ridiculous. I would never do that in uniform. I'd come in plain clothes to say my first amendment, express that however I want, but I'm not using other cities' resources for that. And there was more than one officer on duty. Your chief wasn't honest about it. Pequot even admitted there is at least one of his officers on duty. And yes, I've dealt with Pequot. Talked to the sheriff. Turns out, you guys talk so much that you talk to the sheriff. I had a meeting with him that got canceled because of the nonsense that's gone on over here. So much gossip. And what's interesting about your police chief, it seems like you all think that you're above the law. I know you're just begging for this clock to run. Maybe I can have someone move for a little extension. But what's interesting about the police chief is, in that meeting, you know, there is an executive order going on right now that makes not wearing a mask a misdemeanor. And it requires all you guys walking around, there's an exemption for here, for legislative bodies in a meeting, there's an exemption for COVID masks. You want to take them off, go right ahead. But when you're walking in there, you don't. And I'm glad to see, Mr. Don, that you're roaming around there without a mask. And I told the police chief, hey, are you going to enforce this stuff? You just told me that you're going to take your mask off, commit a misdemeanor. What about one of your councilmen? He told me that he's not going to enforce the law with you guys. Is that fair? Does that seem like a tyranny to you? So what's your excuse for walking around? You think you're above the law? I mean, this is really interesting, because this is such, the level of hypocrisy is just breathtaking. And there's no integrity here. What's interesting is the only person that's been bad mouthed here or even criticized the mayor. Yes, it was ill-advised what you did, mayor. However, I agree with your spirit. And I think it was, your heart was in the right place, because there's a problem. Now, what's interesting about all this stuff is when I make...
You have till seven eighteen, actually. Fifteen minutes is the maximum.
Thank you. So what's interesting is that I made data practices request, which your city went right to your county attorney, your city attorney, Mr. Pearson, right away. And I understand that. And in fact, I'd recommend that. But that's when he responded, where he well knows my tactics. And that's what a tactic is. I'm assuming that you know that it's the state law to respond to data practices.
I'm aware of state law. You're on a clock. Make your point. We already addressed this. Move on, please.
Okay, I'm going to talk about what I want, Mr. City Attorney.
Talk what you want to talk about, but I'm not here to answer your questions of me. That's not what I do here.
Okay, well, again.
And I'm well versed in state law, Mr. Scheffler.
Okay, good. Then you're going to timely respond to my request.
Your response, we'll get it responded to like everybody else who makes a death...
And what's interesting, since you're taking my time, what's interesting is that when I made those data requests, that Lake Shore, Nisswa, Cross Lake, Pequot, all got together. It's like, oh my gosh, this Mr. Scheffler's asking for some data. And I've seen that before. And you know what happens? And why people do that is because they're worried some dirt's going to come out on someone. Why would you guys be so paranoid that that would be the case? Why would all these cities be so paranoid that I'm going to dig something up on you guys? And the only reason that anyone would share that type of stuff, because there's nothing unusual about the request. And again, it's the state law that Mr. Pearson's well aware of. Why would you run to another city and narc them out unless you were intending to hide something? And I've seen it done before. And that city ended up paying a lot of money for it. And that leads me to another issue. I mean, I could go into this T Z D program. It's so ridiculous, and you guys all know it.
Just a reminder, Mr. Scheffler, three minutes yet, and then you'll be next out, okay?
Thank you. So, like I said, the T Z D program really doesn't have much to say about it. I don't think I really need to talk about my pedigree too much, but I've worked for city. I've worked for state. Worked for the U.S. Treasury. So I have no problem with government. I just have a problem with tyrants and people that misuse tax money. And that's all I see around here. When you hire a Nisswa police officer, they patrol Nisswa. When you hire a Pequot officer, they patrol Pequot. If there's some sort of joint service agreement that you guys have, I can respect that. I understand that. I know what it's like to be in a situation where you want someone to have your back because it's hostile, you don't know what's going on. But when other officers are just patrolling elsewhere, that's absurd. So my little venture around your city, just to see how bad it really was, because again, I took it hard, stay out of Nisswa when I moved up here. I don't try to patronize in your businesses. So you think that you're supporting the police just blindly, as like that woman said, that her business is going to get ruined? Absurd. No. What happens is people avoid the city because they don't want to deal with the cops. I want to ride by an officer, wave at them, and not worry about getting on their radar so they could pick out some petty thing on three seventy-one. So, as I said, I went on a little trip through Nisswa. And what happened? I got stopped by one of your officers. You know what happened after that? I took him down a few pegs about the law. And I'm sure Mr. Pearson can inform me about false imprisonment and Fourth Amendment. Yeah, the whole thing's videotaped. It's going to be a hell of a thing when I start publicizing what you guys really are doing. It's absolutely disgusting and absurd how hypocritical you guys are. It's shameful. Why don't you support the community? The only reason you exist is because of the community. And that officer came up to me, hand on his gun, oh yeah, after he parked in front of me, blocking traffic. It suggested I go around him into oncoming traffic. What was he doing? Poaching people on three seventy-one? Big shocker. Big shocker. Man, hell of a police department you guys got. You know, I just really don't understand the community and the sycophantic attitude and the polarization. And we're seeing a complete breakdown in support of the police, and it pains me. I want to support the police, and I do support the police. Like I said, spent plenty of time in law enforcement myself, but I don't like this attitude. I don't like the, I've never liked the thin blue line, because you know what that means to me as a citizen? Is that the police are drawing a little blue line in the sand, separating themselves from the public. And what really irritates me is the idea of calling the public civilians. How absurd is that? No, police officers are citizens too. We're all a family. We need to support each other. Not having us against them attitude. And this comes from you guys. You're their bosses. You're the one that hired them. Do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scheffler. Mr. Fear.
Good evening, Bob Fear. I just have a couple of questions to the city council members, excluding Mr. Ryan, about the special meeting in which I was not in attendance, so, but please forgive my ignorance. So the questions are basically a little bit about procedure. A couple of days ago, I just picked up my minutes, so I'm just a couple of days new into this. I haven't done exhaustive research, but I'd just like a couple of clarifications from the council members. It says in the minutes here, the purpose of the meeting was to discuss an incident between Mayor Hayman and two police officers. Well, my first question to the council members is, what information did you collect from who that justified the meeting?
Gary?
I am not exactly sure what you're asking, Mr. Fear.
Well, there was some crisis that happened, and there was some information conveyed to council members, specific information that they thought, we need to address this immediately. This is a, this is a crisis for a special meeting. I'm asking what, who was asked for that information? Who did you get it from? And essentially, very briefly, what was, what was the information conveyed? In, you know, like fifty words or less.
Well, certainly the story that ran in the dispatch, certainly all of the video that was released, conversations with both police chiefs was had.
To summarize what you just told me, is it safe to say that it was essentially information from the dispatch that was garnered from the police on the scene? Would that be essentially correct?
I suppose yes, it would be.
Okay.
And, and the other video that was released.
My understanding, at the event, there were three parties. There were the police, the mayor, and there was a family removed from their car and their vehicle's being searched. My understanding is that it's very likely that there's going to be a hearing, there's going to be lawyers involved, they'll be vetting by a lawyer and the judge presiding, and more infraction will flow in from the other two parties. And I see as a result of this meeting, three very punitive actions were taken as a result of the limited, or less than complete and less than vetted information that was received. I see that the, that the mayor, and I'm not here to build up the mayor, say he did something right or wrong, but I see punitive actions were taken and that he was asked to resign. He was removed from a committee. And I forget what the third one is, but it's, I guess the reason I'm talking here is I really believe in due process. And you know, you can go on Twitter today, we've seen this the last couple of months, and you can just destroy somebody. And then, three, two, three months later, you know, page thirty-seven, section G of the brain or dispatch will say, yeah, you know, so and so, it really wasn't quite that way. So my plea to the council is, you know, let's make sure we get the whole story before we have special meetings. And that's long and short of all I have to say, because this is pretty eye opening. You know, I had people calling me from the cities going, hey, you're number two behind Minneapolis. I go, please don't make that analogy. So that's all I'm saying. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Do you have a question? Or maybe? Oh, no, no. I've got, I want to speak to the council.
Excuse me, mayor or council, can I get a clarification for the statement from Mr. Johnson? I don't think that he's made.
Sure. Yeah, ask the question.
They'll be vetting by a lawyer and the judge presiding, and, um, more infraction will flow in from the other two parties. And, um, I see as a result of this meeting, three very punitive actions were taken. As a result of the limited, or the, um, less than complete and less than vetted information that was received. I see that the, that the mayor, and I'm, I'm not here to build up the mayor, say he did something right or wrong. But I see punitive actions were taken and that he was asked to resign. He was removed from a committee. And I forget what the third one is, but it's, um, I guess the, the reason I'm talking here is I really believe in due process. And, you know, you can go on Twitter today. We've seen this the last couple of months, and you can just destroy somebody. And then three, two, three months later, you know, page 37, section G of the Brainer Dispatch will say, yeah, you know, so and so, it really wasn't quite that way. So my plea to the council is, you know, let's make sure we get the whole story before we have, um, special meetings. That's long and short of all I have to say, cuz, uh, this is pretty eye opening. And, you know, I had people calling me from the cities going, hey, you're, you're number two behind Minneapolis. I go, please don't make that analogy. So that's, that's all I'd say, and just thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Bob.
Do you have a question? Oh, no, no. I've got, uh, I've got some, I wanna speak to the council.
Excuse me, mayor or council, can I get a clarification for the statement from Mr. Johnson?
Sure, yeah, ask the question.
You said videos were released, but it wasn't the full video, was it? The full body cam was not released, was it?
No, it was not.
So why did you guys and the chief decide only to release part of the body cam?
Well, we didn't decide anything.
So the chief did?
I assume so. I don't know who was involved in that decision.
So just like the gentleman here that was talking about, you know, not really looking into things before you call these special sessions. To censure a mayor, an elected official that the citizens wanted. You didn't even have the information. You didn't have full body cam video, and you're gonna issues, uh, issue all these decrees? On less than full video? Why do you question the chief? Why? He doesn't wanna release the full video?
I don't need to answer that. Not going to answer that.
Shocker.
First of all, I guess I'd, uh, just like to kind of appreciate hearing, uh, something other than, um, Facebook drag. This evening, so. But I want, I want to, uh, address some serious concerns that I have. And I each have a copy of this, and it'll be available to the, to the media, the paper, and Lakeland Public TV, I believe, is here. I believe tonight is, has the ability to become a defining moment of change for our city. And pot, with a lot of positive things to come out of this. Probably gonna be a little hard at first. I wanna start out by clarifying that contrary to social media. I'm a huge supporter of good law enforcement, good police. And I stand firmly behind why we've always needed that service in our community and around the world. A question, I think that we should all ponder and explore, is what is the definition of a good cop? Is it one that handles accidents, emergencies, and traffic management with a smile? Is it one who does everything right when in eyesight, but is morally weak when no one is around? Or is the one who's all, or is it one who is always morally upright, even when no one is watching? That third one is the one I believe. And as mayor, I expect in our city. Retired police officer shared with, shared this with me not all that long ago. Interesting, very interesting person. Many years, police department, many special committees in the state of Minnesota. He got ahold of me, and when I first heard his voice, I thought, boy, this guy's gonna ream me out. He was a cop. He's gonna just ream me out. First thing he said to me is he said, don't let those bastards get to you. And then he shared this. He said, the badge does, does not bring respect to the officer. The officer brings respect to the badge. I believe officers must work to build a connection to the community and building trust in the community one step at a time. Pardon my voice. I've got some sort of allergy thing going on. Not by sitting in a squad car. It's interesting how some of the things I've heard tonight, I was like, wow. Not by sitting in a squad looking for someone to hassle or bust like a video game. But to get out into the community, community and meet citizens, making their acquaintances, working the streets. Building trust and relationships with the people they serve. And I highlighted in bold, serve. Showing care and compassion for those they encounter, not domination and superiority. Good officers do this all the time. I believe we all have a desire to respect and trust police officers. And in return, we want to be treated with care and respect by them. Many good policemen are leaving the profession due to angst against policing because of the actions of some. I find that really disheartening. We see it all around the nation. We see it in our state. We hear about it in the news every day. But it's always like it's somewhere else. Couldn't be in our community, could it? I'll tell you, last couple of weeks have been actually pretty darn good. I've been contacted by many local people with a huge amount of support. Lot of them said, you know, probably didn't choose the best way to do it. I know exactly what you mean, and I know exactly what you're after, and I know exactly your concerns. I could list a page of incidences that were shared and reported to me of poor treatment by some police officers. From Niswa and some of our neighboring communities. By officers with what I would say are questionable morals, from what I heard. But I'm not gonna go there and list that because it'll only do harm to the officers who do have high morals and impeccable integrity all the time. And that's the last thing I want to do is to drag down any good police officer. I was certainly aware of the special meeting that was held, I believe, was September 4th. And how various police from around the area jumped in to show unity, along with, I believe, the Legion post. Correct me if I'm wrong there. I'm not hundred percent sure on that. Sharing words of support, and I heard about the outpour of nasty emails to City Hall, who saw a short clip that our police chief edited by selecting just what he wanted to show the media. Again, pretty amazing when I think about what other people have said here tonight. I have to wonder if these people, these police officers, the Legion post. Would have shown up or said the same thing if they had known what I'm gonna share tonight. As a longtime citizen and the current mayor, residents regularly reach out to me with questions, problems, and concerns. They tell me they do so because they trust me. I listen to them. They tell me. I verify information. Not just trusting the words of staff, department heads, engineers, whoever the city deals with. Not picking on anybody in particular. That's not the point. Point is that people tell me they trust me. That I make, that I look a little deeper to make sure that I know all that I can, and that I get things done. People share what they like and appreciate about the city with me. And they do share a lot of good things. Niswa is a good community. And at times, they also share some real concerns. And Niswa has some real concerns. In my time as mayor, two men, two different men, two different matters have come to me and reported they've been threatened by our police chief. One gentleman, who's in his eighties, shared the incident happened at the memorial service at the Legion here in town for fallen soldiers. Another local resident and past business owner confirmed that that threat indeed did happen. They both said, it doesn't do any good to go up and complain to anybody at City Hall. They don't do anything about it. And I don't wanna put myself out in front of the city because of this, so I'm just gonna let it die. Many of you council members know, cuz I've shared it with you. That I was also threatened by the police chief my first year as mayor. I considered filing charges, but was told, no witness, no witnesses, no case. Word against, one person's word against another. I was also informed that a note of the incident would not be placed in his file. Four women have come to me over the last six years and shared their encounters that they've had with the police chief. Two of the four cried as they told me their stories. None wanted to make public statement or file a complaint because there were no witnesses. And that's all I'm gonna say about that matter. In the past 10 years or more, the city has had staff problems. In the six years I've been involved with the city as an elected official, councilman, then mayor. I have seen the constant disrespect for leadership and staff by three long-term employees. The police chief leading the way. Along with the Public Works Director and the City Finance Person. A few years ago, working together, they bullied, badgered, and harassed a long-term employee to the point that that person left and sought new employment. You council members who were here at that time know that was happening. Yet you failed to do anything about it. I brought it up, not a concern. Mr. Hoff, I, I give you a break. You were not on the council at that time, so. You were not necessarily pervy to that. And that being the case, I wanna make sure that people know that is the case. Way to go. I worked for change. So when the city hired an administrator, that issue would not be there to welcome them. But the council denied or declined, literally putting it off, saying, the new city administrator can, could deal with that. These same employees, again, led by the police chief, vehemently opposed the hiring of the city administrator. Telling the past council they could manage themselves. While resisting that change that was coming and continually making waves through the process, which only continued the negative undercurrent here at City Hall. To this day, these three still refuse to accept the new system and authority. They choose not to participate in team building or team building events. Whenever possible, they comment negatively about the city administrator, other staff members, council members, and yes, even me, the mayor. Very, very readily provable and documented in writing in some cases. This council, made up of Don Jacobson, Gary Johnson, John Ryan, and now Mr. Hoff, who's relatively new. Refused to do anything about it. Said, the city administrator, the new city administrator can deal with that. When our city administrator is out of the office, and I'm not so sure about recently, but in the recent past. Was known to come in and harass and confront other department heads to the point where one closed his door upon arrival of the police chief. And another has referred to the chief as a monster and a ticking time bomb. You guys know that. It's, it's come up at meetings. You guys know that. Yet you refuse to do anything. This has to stop. This has to stop. Mr. Johnson, Gary, you go all the way back to when the police chief was looked to be fired seven, eight years ago. If I'm not mistaken, you made the motion to fire him. You were involved in that. To this day, I do not understand why you do not stand up for the citizens of Niswa. It's troubling to me. You know history from eight, seven, eight years ago, and yet you've done nothing. There is no place for this behavior at City Hall, and the fact that the council, you four are afraid to address this matter is only empowering those people. The council needs to seek professional advice about this and remedy this immediately. Or the city stands to lose the good staff it has recently hired. The council has had to release every officer the chief has requested the council to be promoted to sergeant because of conduct. The council again recently approved the promotion of yet another officer to sergeant. Which I was sternly in opposition to because of information I had, having been contacted by a citizen to help resolve the matter with the said police officer. You four went ahead, didn't even want to take a pause. And passed it four to zero, or four to one, cuz I voted against it. Didn't even have concern. Didn't even have concern. Shame. Interesting, two weeks after that, I was stopped at the end of the service drive along 371. Where I had picked up some equipment and had stopped because of the long line of traffic. Coming down the highway, it was, uh, the weekend before the Fourth of July, so it was basically one of the big fourth. It was one of the two Fourth of July weekends this year. And the traffic was, it was like half mile, third of a mile long, and they were still coming, two by two by two by two around the corner. I stopped, I was stopped there. I unbuckled my seatbelt, reached in my pocket, took my phone out, put it on the console. And apparently, right as I was doing that, Niswa Officer Thompson went by and little to my knowledge, noticed, apparently, I didn't have my seatbelt on at that moment. I pull out on, I didn't really think a lot of it. I pull out on the highway. I get down the highway about a third of a mile. He pulls out, pulls me over. Didn't have your seatbelt on. The police officers sit on that highway like hawks every single day. They see me many times every day going north and south. They know as a matter of fact and pattern, I always have my seatbelt on. I explained to Officer Thompson, I said, if you saw me with my seatbelt off, it's cuz I, and I said I did. I said, I reached in my pocket, took my phone out. I said, there was so much traffic coming, I wasn't going anywhere. Put my phone on the console, so it wasn't sticking me in the hip. And I put my seatbelt back on. Now, I would think that a reasonable quality police officer. Now, I would think that a reasonable quality police officer, having seen me on the highway every single day that he's working, would say, "You know, Mr. Heydman, you do wear your seatbelt all the time. And you know, what you just told me makes plausible sense." But oh no. He made it a point to let me know he was gonna write me a ticket. And he did. And when he left my door after giving me the ticket, he smirked all the way to his squad car. I watched him in my rear side view mirror. Two things I think about that. One is, what kind of orders did our police chief put out? If at all? I don't know. The second is, is that the type of policing we want in our community? What in the world? When our police chief gets questioned about himself or other officers, his general response is, "You hate cops." Or, "You're a cop hater." Our city administrator witnessed that in a meeting that she and I and the police chief had one day some months back. I've heard it from other people in the community as well. I don't think that goes a long ways towards how our police chief and our officers are perceived in our community. And if we want to engage, and if the citizens want to engage our police officers or avoid them, I don't think it, I don't think that's what our citizens are looking for. My belief is that we want to have good encounters with officers in our community. A real bond, knowing that they have our backs and that they will be caring and fair. And in return, because of that, we will respect them and we will treat them with care and concern. The sad part is mediocre cops or bad cops ruin it for the good cops. And in the case in Niswa, it seems to start at the police chief. And you guys know that. For the most part. Again, I'm not sure what Mr. Hoff knows for sure. I've not had, engaged him. But the rest of you have been here long enough that I know you know. That sort of a relationship and that sort of bond with the police and the community only makes sense. And it seems like a pretty logical thing. But yeah, our community doesn't have that. Now, comes a part that a mayor never wants to have to talk about. It's, it is reported by citizens in our community that five marriages have been destroyed by poor police conduct, including our chief, over the last number of years. Along with one mentally challenged woman who an officer allegedly had sex with. In one case, it is alleged that the hus- that a husband came home and found an officer with his wife and got extremely upset, and because of that, he was arrested. Just this year, it was brought to the council's attention that an officer-officers, I'm not really totally sure, may have had or been having sex with a woman or women in City Hall and failed to act on it. You guys know that. I'm sick of it. I am darn sick of it. We are here as an elected body to do everything that we can to make this city better. To see that our citizens are protected, we have great employees, and that we manage the employees as well as our budgets to the very best of our ability. This needs an, this needs an investigation by outside, by an outside party, by an outside party to get to the bottom of this. And then I have to ask and say, and then why, and then people wonder why I blew a gasket when the cops were shaking down vacationers on our highway. Which isn't even our, ours to patrol. That's the job of either the state police or possibly the county. We don't get paid any money from the state highway patrol for spending all those hours sitting on the side of the road. Why are our police officers not patrolling our neighborhoods, meeting with our citizens, building relationships? I've brought that up before. You guys didn't want to talk about it. So I guess, as I'm winding down here, I guess maybe this whole thing is what it took to take, to get the lid off of and pull the curtain on the backside of the city of Niswa. And what is going on. I'm asking that the city and the citizens demand an investigation into all these alleged matters. The citizens need to know that it can trust the police department and that they can trust that the city leaders will make changes as necessary and that, and make it clear that the city leaders will no longer tolerate and hide the behaviors that they are aware of. The city needs to take immediate strong actions to end any unprofessional behaviors by our employees, as I said before, before we lose the recent hires and the good quality employees that we have. Otherwise, we are gonna digress and go backwards. So only one last thing that I'm gonna say, and this is in response to the actions on the Fourth. And that is, I hope now you understand why things happened the way they did on the Fourth of September, like it or not. I could have probably done something a little different. But it didn't work out that way. But I can tell you that my heart, my passion for the city of Niswa, and at times that passion comes out pretty strong. But I will say, at least I have the gonads to stand up and call out what I'm seeing as wrong. And just so council knows, I have no intention of resigning, and I do intend to keep running for mayor for the next two years. Council, where would you like to go?
Yeah, we are.
Yep, yeah.
My name is Ross Prokramer. I'm a citizen of Niswa. And I guess I'm a little confused. I drive these roads every day. I have four family members that drive these roads every day. None of us have ever been pulled over. And you talk about patrolling. I actually live in Niswa. And I see cops on my road all the time, patrolling up and down. And I live off of a side street. So I guess I'm a little bit, I don't understand. And I work with people that drive on the highway every day to get to work. None of them have been pulled over either. So I don't understand where all this kind of harassment's going. So that's just an observation. The other thing is, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I've had some talk with Jenny, is during all of this, from what I understand, there has been no communication from the mayor to the council on how to handle these things that come up in the media and how to handle this stuff. Not anyone, if anyone in the council, if the mayor has called them and talked to them and offered any leadership in what to do. These accusations, and I agree with your first man, first amendment respect, I applaud you for it, I really do. But these accusations needed some, some response from the city. And alls I'm asking is, in that response, was there any leadership or anything from the mayor to any of you as to what should be done? Because that should come from the mayor.
So, and that's- Would you like me to respond to that, or do you want me to wait? I'd be glad to do either.
You can respond.
Okay. So, a couple of months ago, when I had supported a police or a teacher who was looking to be terminated for something that they shared with another friend, I did contact the city, talked with the city attorney about it, shared my concern about what to do. Asked, even asked that the, that the, that the meeting be held off for a few days because I couldn't attend it. But the council went ahead and had scheduled and had the meeting anyways. When this, when it, when it happened this time, I just, my, my thought was, same thing's gonna happen. In reverse, none of the council ever called me to say, "Ooh, what happened?" You know, with either of those incidents. They could have done that just as easily too. So, I'm not putting the, I'm not saying anything. I'm, you know, but if you're, if you're asking why I didn't this time, it's because the first time I did, and they flatly, well, I can't say they refused, but they did schedule the meeting and go, went forth with it. Even after I had shared with the city administrator that I was not going to be able to attend the meeting. But if that was scheduled for a different time, I would be able to. So that's my response to your question.
Well, I still think it still needed some sort of response from you, but that's, I mean, it's, it affects all of us. The negative publicity affects all of us, it was. And I guess, you know, do you feel that-
Who, let me ask Ross, because you're, you've never been a proponent of mine, and a matter of fact, you, you, you've accused me of things that really were pretty cheesy. So, so I'm, but I'm, but the question that I want to ask you is, why did our police chief, without consulting the city administrator, council, anybody? And you know how well he likes and doesn't like, and what his general disposition is. Why did he do that? What was his motivation? Was it to make the city a better place? Was it because he loves Niswa so much? Why did he not go take it to the, to the city administrator and say, "Ew, what should we do?" Continue.
Just even at the video that you see.
Yep, and we see, and everyone's seen.
I guess I under, I just don't see how anyone could look at that and say that was an appropriate reaction. And especially when you're on a busy highway. I mean, it just wasn't. You can, we can say what we want, these accusations, because I was on the council, as you know. And these accusations that you say that there was sex in the building, that never came up. I never, because trust me, if I knew that, I wouldn't sit back and not do anything. That never came, there was never anything written. There was never anything that was brought to the council of them accusations.
Who said you were on the council at that time?
Well, you just said over the last four years.
Right, but I-
Or was that after?
It's after.
I haven't heard since I started. I haven't heard anything like that since I-
So you've been on since I've been on. So, I guess, my point, when you talk about the chief, when you talk about that, but I just seen a video where you stop in front of the post office, parked in the street. You walk into the post office, parked illegally, blocking cars. A lady comes out, gets in her car, asks to wait for you to come out of the post office, get in your truck, and drive away.
Did you know that when I was in the post office, that I let people know that that if they were parked there, that that was just, that'd be a second? That happens all, that happens regularly. People do that on a regular basis. I've had to wait for people. I've seen people there. You know, I mean-
Can't you just find a parking spot and just park instead of parking in the street?
There wasn't any.
I go to the post office all the time. I find a spot. I gotta walk, I walk.
Okay, well, I mean, I guess- Well, write me, write me a ticket then.
Well, no, I'm not gonna write you a ticket, but that's, you know-
So what's your point? Let's move on.
Come on, let's, you didn't have him say, "Come on, move on."
I, I'm, I'm not, but-
Everyone got, you know, I'm just saying, is the law above you where you can just park anywhere you want?
It happens regularly. Write me a ticket then.
I, I don't have that authority, and you know that. I guess to sit here and I just find it really hard to believe. I find it really hard to sit here and have our cops berated. When I was on the council, there was never any complaints about our cops and the police that ever came to me.
You're right. Because people that share things are afraid to come report it if, because it doesn't go anywhere. Because if there aren't witnesses, there is no prosecution.
But on the same token, if there isn't a problem, then, I mean, you offer all this stuff as problems, but there's no proof. There's nothing in writing that says this person did this. It's just this person said. That's not fair to hold these people accountable to just things that people have said. If it's, if you think it's a problem, it should be in writing, and it should be brought before the council. It should be there for everyone to see and how it's handled. Rather than, rather than just publicly saying all these things that, you know, if, if there's a problem, if you have a problem, you put it right and you come for the council. However the council chooses to react or not react to it, then that's on them. But to sit here and say, "Well, you all know this." Half of the stuff you said, you know, is unfounded.
The things that I-
So that's all I'm gonna say.
The things that I pointed out.
That's all I'm saying.
That's fine. Thank you. Things that I eluded to are things that the council is aware of. Yes, please state your name.
My name is Jim Gardner. I'm a resident of Niswa. I've seen the videos. I've read your social media posts from June. I'm not here to argue about the First Amendment. I'm a little bit concerned. One of the things that I'm seeing, the special council meeting that was held on the Fourth, was to address basically the videos that came out of you addressing the police officers. Somehow that seems to have gotten lost in the shuffle. I don't know if the police department is good, bad, or indifferent in this. I really don't. But I don't think that's the point here. I think the point here is what happened with the police department on Highway 371, and I think we need to keep that in our focus. As far as I'm concerned, the duty of an elected official is to represent his constituents or her constituents. And as mayor of Niswa, I think that you should be supporting the business people in the city. I'm not sure that's happening. And again, I think that the focus-
I'm not sure that's happening, and again, I think that the focus of our discussion here has gone. To the police department, has gone to other places, and I think really what we need to do. Is continue to look at what we can do to make Nisswa a better city.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anyone else here this evening? Like to share?
Okay, leave the clarify some any question?
If it's, if it's a simple question, yeah, please.
I think the gentleman inquired about the special council meeting that happened, I believe you said you weren't, weren't there. I'm not talking about the last. Whatever you wanna call it, I'm talking about, did this happen June twenty-fifth? That there is this special council meeting concerning some sort of.
Jenny, do you know the date?
Offhand, I don't, but that sounds, it sounds correct, it's about that time.
Was it the one that the draft? Proposal was based off of?
At the June, the special June council meeting, the council did direct me to draft a. Code of Conduct policy for them to review in July, yes.
Okay, and the mayor wasn't present at that meeting?
Correct, at the special meeting, correct.
Well, that's interesting, because you drafted something and you gave it to the council on June, or July fifteenth. I'm assuming that's what you were, you're hoping to get, and I think the community deserves. But I read this thing, you did a very good job, thank you. Why haven't you guys dealt with it? Where's the vote? Where's the conversation about it? You guys asked for it, she went out of her way to draft this up, I think it's pretty fair. Couple wording issues that I would, I would probably change, but otherwise the spirit's awesome. It's a great document, I'd be hard pressed to believe you guys even read it. But see, when the mayor was gone, it was just all about, let's just dogpile, come up with excuses, demand change. And your city administrator went out of her way to draft this, and by the way, she's salaried, so it's tax money. That was spent to draft what you guys wanted, and you guys didn't even bother to vote on it. What happened with it? I mean, what are you guys doing? Anything? And as far as if it's the Nisswa post office. If that's what you're talking about, the mayor, yeah. I'll take two sides on that one, number one, don't agree that mayor should be above the law and park in places that they shouldn't be parking along with police. Who just, like I said, parked in front of me and will deal with that in a lawsuit, that's fine, that's what the courts are for, Mr. Pearson. But as far as the post office is concerned, I was literally just there two days ago, and yeah, there was no parking. I left. And as far as Nisswa police being on three seventy-one all the time, I mean, I can appreciate that they, they, I'm not denying that they've done it. But I certainly have plenty of video of them just sitting on three seventy-one all the time, and that's where my incident that will, of course, go to court. Be addressed, and I'm guessing a lot of other stuff's gonna come out of that in depositions. So I guess we'll see what happens there, but yeah, and as far as the conversation, the chief, his attitude. And him trying to get me complicit in him committing a misdemeanor, yeah, that was recorded too. So there's no he said, she said, there's no lack of witnesses, we'll see what happens. If you guys want the copies of that, I'd be more than happy to give that stuff to you, like I said, I made it aware to the city administrator. Of what was going on and what I intended to do, I don't hide anything, I wanna get along with the public, I wanna get along with the police. So therefore, I buy, I buy the public to do a job.
FYI, the city council code of conduct policy is on tonight's agenda, under old business, I didn't know if you got a copy of this. Did you get a copy of the agenda?
I've got one on the stage, July fifteenth.
For tonight, yeah. It was initially table till October, but it's gonna be on tonight's because what we needed to get upgraded and fixed was done, so.
So, no actions, let's just move on.
Move on.
That's interesting. Okay. Reports, or no, I'm sorry, spirits department presentation, do we wanna do that tonight, or do we want to postpone? Okay, if you'd like to do it, Brian, go ahead.
Thank you for having me here tonight, and just to clarify for the audience out there. Once a year, I give a presentation to the council, just to let them know how spirits is running, how our business is going. And what we like to see, what we're gonna see and hope for the future. And as you see up on the screen, that's just what we always like to see as a full parking lot, obviously.
Is that yellow car yours?
No, that is not my car, but. So our sales with every other retail liquor store, probably in the state of Minnesota, is extremely good. We, if we go off of a thirty-five week, which is roughly the, the end of August, September, somewhere in there. We are, we're at two hundred and seventy, two, two million, seven hundred and seventy-four thousand. And a little bit more than that compared to last year, which were at two million, three hundred thousand. And if we look at that, that's a four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollar increase, and I tell you what. We're pleased to see that, was it a lot of work? Yes, it was, and with our pandemic and all that stuff, were we stressed a little bit? Yes, we were, are we glad that summer is over? I'm gonna miss the weather, definitely, but we desperately needed a break, I always like to say. We know we, we work in a seasonal area, and the summers can really be taxing on us, we like about a two to three week break. And, but then we're like, okay, where are the people, and we're coming into that season right now. So I'd like to just thank the council for all the support that we had through our pandemic, through our crazy season that we have at Spirits. And support from every one of you, and the support from all the citizens in Nisswa. And our state and other states that did come into our store and purchase products, so thank you very much. If you look at, every year, we are trending at a nice trend, I like to. My goal is to be around ten percent up every year, and we are fortunate. I've been with Spirits a little over five years, and we've always been up ten, uh, roughly, give or take a percent, about ten percent, so. We're very thankful for that, I always say to the council, be prepared, because someday it might not be that easy. You know, there's always a, you know, a ceiling out there, and we haven't reached it yet, and who knows if we, when we will, or if we ever will reach it, but. When sales are up, things are obviously much easier for us at Spirits and for you guys also. So if we look at customer count, which really does make sense, we're actually down about just a little bit. I like to say, basically, we're even, we're at seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-five compared to seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-one. That's what, fifty people. And it's, it does make sense with COVID, our sales are up, our customer count is about the same. People, especially back in the spring, people were coming in and they were buying crazy amounts of products, and. I like to chuckle because I've talked to some friends and other people, some people that didn't even drink before are drinking now, and I'm like. This is kinda puzzling, but it's, it's something that, you know, we, we'll just take it. And we'll run with it and smile about it, now, if you look at that same thing. An average customer. Spent twenty, basically twenty-eight dollars, and this year, for the, for, for the first thirty-five weeks, they've spent. Thirty-three, thirty-three point seven, thirty-three dollars and seventy-four cents, so if I looked at the previous years, typically. An average customer spends, it's an increase of five percent, and with this year, we're at a little over twenty percent increase. And I like, I like to say, whoops, I think I missed a screen there. Okay, my sheets are different from the ones up there, but. What, it all goes back to the time we're living in right now with the pandemic, all that stuff. You know, people, like I said, back in March, they were spending, they were buying five cases compared to one case every day. People were, and still are afraid to go out in public, and some people are. So they're buying more in quantity instead of making a daily stop on that. Through this whole process, we still have had time to advance some of the goals that I've had. And the liquor committee has had, and this was, it might seem like a small deal to some people, but we've always had those. Rocks in the front of the building, and they were painted, but because people would, especially in the winter time, they would walk through those rocks, we were trying to. I'd always try to shovel them off, well, it's hard to shovel rocks in the wintertime, and people, some people would come in. With high heels, they'd walk through those rocks, and I was always a little concerned about them tripping. So over the winter, our maintenance poured the cement, I really appreciate they did a great job on that. And we painted it up so people weren't tripping on, on different parts of it, or weren't trying to drive through. Our sidewalk, which was happening right away, but we're very excited to have that, especially with this coming winter. When we have a little snowboard, I'll be able to snowball that so easy and keep it easy to use for our customers.
That was a big safety improvement, definitely.
Yes.
That was a good, that was a good move, those, those rocks were, were. Dangerous, it was tough for, you know, people walking through crushed rock, and like you said, if you'd had the. Inappropriate shoes on, it was especially dangerous, so it was a good safety improvement as well as a convenience for people, so way to go.
Thank you, so I'm gonna jump to the next slide here. Just this last week, we, so since day one, we've always just hand mop the store, and. I, I don't know if you guys know here, but I try to keep that store as clean as possible, which is extremely hard with our compressors, with the customers coming in. I'm always on the, on the staff, let's make sure we do a midday sweep, make sure you change the water out in the mops, you know, at least twice while you're mopping. You can mop one aisle, and the, and the, and the mop bucket is basically not black, but it's very dirty. And so then you're mopping the next aisle with dirty water, so we just purchased a floor mop or scrubber, and I came in last week. So I used it for first time on Monday, it is going to be extremely nice, because the way that works is. All the water it puts on the floor, it sucks up and puts into a different tank, so it's always cleaning the floor with clean water. And with that aspect, we'll be taking the dirt that will be, we, we were in the past leaving in the floor. And sucking it up, so it's not gonna go on the bottles as much, and I'm a firm believer in that people. Want to, to shop at an organized, clean store, and believe me, it was not cheap. But it is going to definitely pay for itself in the long haul, the other aspect of it is, is we always, we'd always mop after we closed the store. And that was what we're supposed to do anyways, I'm sure they fudged on it a few times, but this way, this machine is so quiet that we can mop. While we are open, so we'll be saving money as far as not having to have people there after hours. Scrubbing the floor, which generally took about twenty minutes, so I'm very excited to, to have this onboard, and. Some of the other aspects that I just wanted to talk about, that I'd like to see in the future and that we have budgeted for. I'm always, I'm my, my type of personality is I'm never happy with status quo, and sometimes I frustrate everybody around me because. People don't like change, but I, I love change, but some of the things that we have in our store. Is we always have these cardboard end caps, so what I put in the budget is to do a wood cedar end caps. For basically all of our end caps, and with that, it is going to work really nice, because before COVID. We'd always have our end caps and they would stick out about a foot and a half, well, we pulled every one of our end caps. When COVID started, because we just wanted to make sure that there was enough room for all of our customers for social distancing, they wouldn't have to get as close to the other customers. And it really cleaned our store up, with the cedar end caps that we're going to build, it is going to be much smaller end caps. I feel they'll be just as effective, if not more effective, because they'll be organized and clean, and then we're also going to take that same look. And change the center aisle, and which we have cardboard boxes for this wine aisle, and have it matching throughout the store. Is, that is my presentation, and I'm open for any questions.
So if COVID isn't happening next year, can you guarantee the sales are gonna be as good?
Well, we've never had a decline in sales, so I, I'm just gonna go off history.
You're putting.
I'm not saying I'm gonna guarantee it, but I'm gonna say we've never had a decline in sales.
Yes, let's hope not, let's hope not.
Yeah.
Are there a lot of people doing, like calling in orders, pickup?
Not a lot, but it is. It does happen, and generally, they're nice sized orders, but sometimes we'll have a case of beer. It, and it's actually not very hard for us to zip it up, to zip out, grab something, and we'll. Put the order on the computer, suspend it, and then, well, I'll tell you how, how, basically, they'll call up and they, they place the order. I get their name, phone number, I pull the product, suspend the order, give them a call back, and then I take their credit card information. And type it in the computer, so when they call, within the parking lot, I basically pick the product up, carry it out, and put it by their vehicle, or. Most of the time, they'll have the hatch of their, or the trunk of their vehicle open, and they'll put it right in there, and they're very thankful for that. It, does it take more time? It does, but we're happy to do it.
Great, it's great service, great service.
We continue to try to. Be safe for our, for our employees and for the customers, we initially, I was very happy with Spirits. We were one of the first liquor stores to put up the shields on the counter. We recently are looking at making them permanent, or more permanent, they still will be taken down, but. We are going to, because those, actually, all the plexiglass is very thin, and I got it, we got it free from Terry from, from the pickle. And we are making that, so it's gonna be more permanent for our customers, because we just feel it's not been an obstacle. For our customers to deal with, or our staff, and even down the road with the flu season, the cold season. A lot of our staff, as mentioned, that they would love to see it up permanently, and I see no reason why we can't. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Brett.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah. Next this evening, reports, first is city administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, members of the council, I have a few updates tonight, I realized that. I didn't prepare a Parks Department update for your consent agenda, so I'll just verbally update you on what's been happening with the parks. Our community center roof damage, as you know, we had a tree fall on the roof a couple of months back. We have been working with the league to finalize, we were only able to obtain one quote, we did solicit quotes. From three different contractors, but I think everybody's very busy, and so we were able to work with one quote. That came from High Tech, the league insurance signed off on that, so we're getting that scheduled, and hopefully the work will be done very soon. So we'll have that taken care of, our fall youth sports programming for soccer and for football. We've had great registration numbers, it's been great to see, I have probably twenty soccer and. Eight to ten football registrations, which was more than I expected, so, so that's been great, we had some parent volunteer to. Parents volunteered to coach, so that has worked well, and their practices started this week. So that's, will be going on for the next month, we'll have those programs. And I do have a recommendation in the packet tonight to hire new parks and recreation. to hire a new Parks and Recreation Director. And I'm excited to introduce you to Amber once we get into new business. I want to thank the interview panel. That was Terry Hansen, Tessa Capel, Jonathan Stainbrook and Brittany Cotner. We interviewed some really great candidates and I'm really excited to bring Amber onto our team. That is for, that is all for the Parks Department. Are there any questions about Parks or Community Center items? Okay. Just to follow up on, if you remember, early in the year, we submitted our pay equity report. We, that's a three, it's done every three years. When we submitted our information at the end of 2019, we were not in compliance with one of the, I believe, four tests that they have. But we resubmitted our information with our 2020 payroll data. And we are now in compliance and have received the okay from the state. I'm waiting for the official report back, but that has been taken care of and, and is good for, for the next three years. So that was great to be able to check that off the list. The League of Minnesota Cities, as you know, I'm on the board and we held a virtual retreat last week. We had four Zoom sessions and they covered the topics of race equity, communication, public safety. And then we had a general roundtable discussion, which mostly was around COVID and CARES funding and some of those things. It was, was a great, a great opportunity to get to know the other board members, even in a virtual setting. And I'll be continuing to share information with the council, a little more detail as far as the outcomes of those work sessions here in the next few months. Two more things. Just want to let you know, and this will be a part of our levy discussion as well. But Crow Wing County did give the city the approval to contribute $35,000 towards our recycling program for next year. So that is a positive. That's just over 1% of what we were looking at for our budget and our levy conversation. So that's really great and thankful to Commissioner Bill Brecken. He was really supportive of that, of our request and, and made that known at the county commissioner meeting. And they ultimately approved it. So. The last item I have is more for the, the business community and our nonprofit community. The county application window for submitting, for the grant, for the county, for the CARES grant program, for the $10,000 grant, I believe ends on Friday. We have had 14 Nisswa businesses apply, which is great. So if there are any other businesses out there who want to apply for that, please get your application in. Because there are funds available and we want to see that back into our community. Those are the updates I have and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is there anything, is there anything new brewing with the recycling program from the, from the county as far as, or are they just waiting for bids to decide who's going to be the recycler?
Yes, they, they actually, they have not actually sent out their bid request yet. It should be going out soon. But they won't know who their selected hauler will be until probably the end of November. So they agreed to contribute $35,000 to our program regardless of the vendor we choose for this year. And then we can keep working on our long-term plan.
Cool. Awesome. Thank you, Jenny.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the city?
We know how long that bid that the county is looking to get. Is that a yearly one or is that?
I don't know. I'm, I'm not sure. I, I would assume it would be at least a two-year. That would, I mean, make sense, but I, I'm not sure.
Next this evening is the city attorney. Mr. Pearson, you have anything for us right now?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. No, I've got nothing specific to report tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Mark?
Good evening, Council. Just Hazelwood Bridge is about 95% complete. Contractor right now is just waiting for the guardrail and handrail to show up to be installing that. And the 2020 street projects are scheduled for wear course next week, provided DeShale Excavating finishes up the sewer services on the south part of that. That's, that's what Knife River has been waiting for here the last week. But they, the schedule we got from them showed Al being here tomorrow, Friday, and then Monday to finish up his services for that. And then work, you know, is continuing on the wastewater treatment facility. The lower building footings were actually cast yesterday, Tuesday. And clearing, well, clearing is done, grubbing is, you know, continuing on with the, you know, the disposal of the stumps and all the underbrush. And then, you know, along with the major earthwork on secondary cell four. We were out there. I sent the administrator a couple of photos yesterday, but, and then our first, or our next monthly meeting is actually, they're scheduled for last Thursday month. So it'll be Thursday of next week at 10:00 AM out at the site. So that's it unless you have any questions for me.
Just, I'll just comment, it was fun to see the new block top going down on Hazelwood and.
Yeah, they got the base course down on the north part of it.
Yeah, it's looking sharp. Thank you, Mark. Anyone have any questions for you? Hearing none, we will move on to new business and we are going to move item E15 up to first under new business. And that is our new park and rec director, Jenny's going to talk about and introduce it to us.
Thank you. So as I mentioned, I have a recommendation to hire Amber Moon Peterson as our new Parks and Recreation Director. She comes to us from the Hallet Center in Crosby and has some great experience both there and just overall within parks and recreation. And she is here tonight. And maybe would just like to introduce herself and say hello really briefly. But my recommendation is to hire her with a start date of October 5th, I believe, somewhere right around there. And yes, I'm happy to answer questions.
Amber, would you like to say something?
Sure thing.
And if you would, we'd allow you to drop your desk for a minute so we can, actually, people can see you. Thank you very much.
Yes, I'm, thank you, Jenny. I'm Amber Moon Peterson, Nisswa resident. Thank you for having me here. Thank you for taking the time to explain the position, a little bit more about the community. I appreciate the opportunity to learn more and I'm very excited to get on boarded and pick up where Matthew left off. And it's a challenging time, but I think parking recreation is extremely important right now. So I think it's given us the opportunity to be very creative. And I'm hoping to bring some of what I've experienced in Crosby over here and help the people of Nisswa.
Thanks, Amber.
Thank you. Thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we agree with the recommendation to hire Parks Director Amber Moon Peterson.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hoff. A discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Welcome, Amber.
Welcome. Congratulations.
So moving on, it is actually now number one, public hearing, chapter 10 of the city code regarding sewer regulations.
Mr. Mayor, a move we open the public hearing.
Second. Second by Johnson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Here we go.
Do you like me to speak briefly on this?
Sure, if you'd like to.
Sure.
If you'd just like some council action, that's fine too.
I'll just let you know, this was published in the paper, that there would be a public hearing tonight. I have received no questions or comments from the public. Certainly, if there's anyone here tonight who wants to speak to it, but the council did see this a couple of months ago in our draft form. So it was a complete overhaul of our, of our sewer ordinance. And Tom did a, our public works secretary did a really nice job in condensing the language and hopefully we'll make it much easier to work from.
Awesome. Just before we move on, is there anyone here that would, has any questions or, or concerns about this?
Actually, I'm concerned about the hiring. Sounds like great hiring and everything, but does anyone know the salary that you guys just approved?
Is it our packet?
Like something that's supposed to be publicly announced in a council session?
I don't know if it, I mean, if it, we can announce it. Yes, it was. It's in the packet for public information, but. So grade 13, step six of the union contract, $59,550.40.
Mr. Jenkins, you were nothing? Okay. Kind of, yeah, you. I didn't know if you wanted to, if you wanted to speak or not. Okay. Just. You would probably, especially with my rougher voice tonight, you'd probably like me to be closer to the microphone. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
A comment. I'm looking at page six of, of the document. It's under sewer connection requirements. Maybe I'm missing it someplace, but in section one and two, under, under that page, I don't see anything about what we discussed at the last meeting. And that was that the people did not have to hook up until their system became non-compliant.
That was only for Hazelwood. That was only for the Hazelwood extension that we did that.
Shouldn't that be applied uniformly?
No. The, the problem, Don, that happened with Hazelwood, normally they, under the old ordinance, you had 90 days.
Right.
We wanted to put in there something that provided more, a more definite period. But with Hazelwood, the city failed to really notify those people in a timely fashion. And especially because on Hazelwood, every single hookup will have to have a step station. And so that bounces it from the $10,000 hookup fee that each one's looking around $25,000 to $26,000. And since they really didn't know, had they known five years ago when we, or four years ago when we did the bond, that, hey, we're going to put sewer in here. They have time to do things. But it was everyone, I talked to a lot of the folks up and down the road there. They all had the same concern. I can't do that in 90 days or, or whatever. And then we said the length of the bond. So what we'd said at the last meeting was that they would have till their system, those, but it's a small, small number of people. The concern with doing that for everybody going forward is, for example, if you finished all the way down Lower Royal Lake Road to the end, there'd be no way that the city, I mean, that's a huge chunk of money the city would lose and have to sit on. But by giving them 10 years as opposed to like the bond and stuff.
Mayor, then in the discussion, we were talking about two different things that I thought that applied to both. If it only applies to Hazelwood, then this is everything else. Okay, that's fine.
I would like, just, I would just like to comment that I'm not in favor of any requirement for people on Hazelwood to have to hook up. Lots, for the most part, are adequate in size. $25,000, $20,000 to $25,000, $26,000. Whether it's now, five years, 10 years, or when you sell your property, you have to add that to the cost. I don't think that's reasonable. I don't think, I personally don't think that's reasonable at all. My personal view is I don't believe we needed to extend the sewer down Hazelwood. There was other ways in, for future to connect farther down from a different line. And, you know, so I, I don't support that. I don't think that's a fair burden for the, for the citizens along there. That's my, that's my viewpoint. Counsel, anything else?
What we, what we have before us is, does not pertain to Hazelwood.
Correct.
That's right.
Do we need anything else or?
So if you'd like to close the public hearing and then the council can take action, that'd be good.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Seconded by two gentlemen on my left. Okay, so I would entertain a motion.
A move that we adopt in chapter 10 sewer regulations as presented by staff.
Second.
Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Posed?
Aye.
Item E2, approved preliminary 2020 tax levy collectible in 21. A is resolution proving the preliminary 2020 tax levy collectible, option one at 5%. To B is resolution proving the preliminary levy at 3%. Counsel?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd move the 3% with the idea is that I'd like to see it lowered to zero by the time we go to the final, but I, for an interim, I'll, I'll move the 3%.
I agree and I'll second that.
I, I also agree, but I do have a quick question. So the difference is what, 49, 50,000? What's the difference? Can't do the math.
Should be, yes. Yep.
And where's that? Where does it come, why the difference?
Where's the 50 coming from?
Yeah.
Well, at our last budget workshop, I landed, my recommendation was the 5%.
Right.
Based on unknowns for the recycling center at the time and for union contract negotiations were the two big things. So I said, based on we have our levy and, our levy and our budget, trying to balance those, just to say, it would leave us room to work towards a final at five. And then we discussed, well, if the county kicks in money for the recycling and we use our reserve money for the rest of the recycling, that's $70,000 that we bring it down closer to 3%. So I said I would bring both. It's just, there's, there's no specific budget items we would get rid of. It's just a number at this point.
Okay, that's fine.
Till we get down to that last vote, everything is in flux. Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? That motion carries. Item E3, approved truth and taxation meeting, date of December 16th, 2020, 6:30 PM at, I presume, City Hall.
Mr. Chair, Jenny, if we adopt this, we have later on the agenda, the discussion on changing the day of the council meetings from Wednesdays to Tuesdays. If we choose to make that change, that would change this date. What, what problem does that give you?
I guess I would say if, if you ultimately change the council meeting schedule in 2020, then following that decision, I would make another motion to change this date for the truth and taxation. Otherwise, if you make a decision potentially to change the council meeting schedule starting in 2021, then we'd be okay still.
Okay, so it's up to us whether it's 2021 for change or before that?
Yes.
Okay.
And your plan is that whatever, whatever day the council meeting would be, is you'd like to have this for the council meeting?
Yes, yes.
So it'd be either the 15th or 16th, if it was this year.
Correct, yeah. December 15th or 16th, yep.
Do we have a second on that?
I don't think we have.
You don't have a motion yet.
I'll move, so move to set the meeting date of December 16th for truth and taxation.
Second.
Second by Johnson. Thank you much, very much on that. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes. Item E4, approved partial pay request. Number one, from Knife River in the amount of 190, I'm sorry, I'll lean forward. In the amount of $190,653.08 regarding the 2020 street improvements. And I presume that our city engineer, Mr. Hallen, you've, you've looked it over, you approve?
I reviewed it and Go Google our engineer that's actually handling the project, that he went through the IRAs and developed the payment application.
Okay.
So, yeah, so it's recommended for approval to your city minister.
Verified that the amount requested fits the work that's been done.
Right, well, for the quantities and the bid.
Okay, very good. Swindled ask. Counsel?
Make a motion to approve partial pay request. Make a motion to approve partial pay request number one for Knife River, or from Knife River as presented.
Second.
Seconded by Jacobson, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? That motion carries. Just out of curiosity, uh, Mr. Jenkins, can you hear me? Can you hear me very well now? A little better, I'll, I'll try to lean forward. Item E5, approved partial pay request, number one, from Landwear Construction in the amount of 239,242.11 regarding the work on the new Hazelwood Bridge. Again, I'm presuming that.
Right, based on unit bid prices and work completed, you know, that provides the payment application.
Okay. Counsel?
Mayor, I'll move approval for Landwear Construction in the amount presented.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Jonathan, you can decide that one. Um, all those, or any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Sorry, I was just going to comment that, um, we're, with Seth is also working with the county to get reimbursed from the state for the cost for the bridge. That's part of that, so that's also in the work, so we pay it and then we'll get reimbursed.
Okay, thank you for, uh, note, or informing all of us and the public about that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? That motion carries. Item E6, approved partial pay request, number one, from Eagle Construction in the amount of 139,412.50 regarding the wastewater treatment facility project. And I'll just, again, Mark, you guys have, you guys have, are comfortable with the request and?
This is actually mine, like I said, the, you know, the contractor submits a schedule of values, which is actually attached to the payment applications. You can see, clearing and rubbing and earth moving are the primary, you know, first, uh, major item that they're being paid for here along with some of their mobilization, bond and insurance.
Okay. Counsel?
I'll move to approve the partial pay request from Eagle Construction in the amount presented.
Second.
Seconded by Johnson. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? That motion carries. E7, I'm questioning that one, Jenny, help me out. Says approve, oh, it's a change order, I'm sorry. That makes sense, approve change order number one from Eagle Construction regarding wastewater treatment project, facility project. Do we have an amount on that? That we could make?
Seventy-seven, four, sixty-seven.
Uh, we do, and if you don't mind, I'd have, I'd ask Mark to, um, explain, just describe a little more detail. And then we also put in front of you, um, a last minute request for change order number two as well. So if he can, um, explain both and, um, perhaps Tom, if, if, um, can, can assist as well, that would be helpful.
Okay.
All right, so, change order number one from Eagle Construction. There are two items that comprise this change order. One is that, uh, as I know, the, uh, you know, federal David Bacon wage rates published on July 3rd replaced the June 12th, 2020, which is the bidding documents. We had to go through, that was not included in the addendum number two. You know, the state wage rates from last November, excuse me, December 19th, same, same. The federal government decided to change it between, you know, July 3rd and, uh, June 12th. So we had to give the hours from the contractor, it was around a dollar fifty-eight an hour on the average wage rate. So we had to adjust the, uh, you know, the labor amounts that they're going to be paid to that, you know, based on all the hours that totals, you know, the figure that they show there on their attachments and all the sub, eight to eight subcontractors, the sum of 28,333 dollars. Second item is, when, uh, for bidding the project, thought with staff and, uh, all of the, we had, you know, had some questions during the bidding, the electrical generator, and it was decided to, you know, revise the generator from the 400 KW size down to 150 to serve the new blower building, which has the blowers that supply the, you know, the oxygen to the pumps to keep the treatment system in process. Your, your, you know, in all the years, you haven't had that many down times, you know, and your irrigation season is, you know, uh, eight months long. If you were, if we're, we lose the ability to run one of those 40 horsepower pumps for a day or two, it doesn't make or break your irrigating out on your field area. So the decision was made to do that, they worked with Jesse Johnson from Holden Electric, because he's one of the ones that brought the idea up. Two, just because the maintenance costs on 150 KW sized generator is a fraction of 400. Uh, they, he pointed out that an oil change on that 400 KW took like 23.4 gallons of synthetic oil. So, you know, good input from all parties, Tom included, because he looked at that. So, and that's shown as a credit of 105,800.49. So that's two items in this change order, so the change order is actually a net decrease to the project of 77,000 change for this change order.
Okay? Very good.
Mr. Mayor, question? I'm looking at the change order number one. And what you just talked about on, on the third sheet is the, uh, change on the generator. That should have been a change order, we didn't get a change order for that. Was that just decided by staff or how did that come about?
I didn't follow, the, the chain, you know, item two is the breakdown of electrical generator cost.
Right.
Right, and, right, so that's in this change order, there's two items in change order number one.
Well.
Changing decisions in the electrical generator. And that project total.
Well, maybe I'm misreading it, but I see this change order we have right now on the front page, there's a 77,467.49. That's a decrease, and that's change order number one.
Right, which is the 105,000 dollar, um, front piece of number that's a E dot, minus the add cost of 28,332, so it's the difference between those two items. And it's actually then, you know, it's a, it's increase of the 77. But I just, I put in a change order one for an increase of, you know, 28,320, and a change order two for a decrease of 105. I combined them into one because it was processing.
You're, you're saying the, the change order is both for the gas generator downgrade and the, the 77s for other things, you're putting them together.
Right, so the 28,330 dollars of increase in wage rate based on the David Bacon rates published on, you know, the July 3rd, 2020.
Okay, I see what you're saying, but it, it looked different when I looked at it the first time, it looked like there were two change orders in here instead of one.
Right, okay, because like I said, that, you know, on the top, it's change order one, and I have two items. There may be items that might have three or four items in one change order.
Okay.
All right, we're good, Mark, thank you. Okay. So we are being asked to approve change order number one and change order number two.
Do we have to do them separate?
Yeah.
I don't think so, but.
The second one is a different firm.
Okay.
Well, it's up to you, but.
Move to approve change order number one for Eagle Construction wastewater.
Second, do I hear?
Second.
Seconded by Jacobson, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Posed? That motion carries. Now a motion for the second.
I'll move to approve change order number two, same company, Eagle Construction.
Okay.
I'll, I'll, I'll do a second, but I think that we should put the, the price in there, the change order is an increase of 31,500. I've got to.
Amendment accepted.
Okay. Questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? That motion carries. Item E8, approved police policy addition regarding eyewitness identification procedures. Anybody? Jenny, I'm not looking for anything, but.
Question, could you explain what that is, please, Alan Jenkins as well?
Okay. Jenny?
Um.
Looks like it's yours.
What I can say is that, um, there are new mandatory policies coming from the post board that, um, police departments need to approve. This is a standard policy, um, that they have drafted, that they have provided to our department. We make sure just everything, the wording looks right for our department, but it's, um, a new, uh, mandatory policy from the post board. I really can't give you details, it's kind of process on how they, on how they, um, operate. John might have a better introduction or detail for it, but it's certainly here, if you want to read it or we can get more information. I just know it's mandatory, so we have to adapt it.
It outlines, Alan, how the departments are to, uh, have the policy in place, as Jenny said, it's mandatory. And it serves to, as a guideline, um, for policy, um, for the departments on the various items that are, are issued. Several topics are addressed in it. Misconduct database, new in-service training requirements, police crisis intervention, mental, mental illness, crisis training, peer counseling, critical incident management, critical incident stress management, uh, new reporting, uh, and the new reporting requirements for those. There are, uh, will be more updates later this year too, they said. When I read through it, a lot of this has to do with lineups. How do you conduct a lineup? How do you conduct a photo lineup? How do you conduct a, uh, on-scene lineup? How do you conduct, uh, or witness or, or subject identification, those types of things? And that's, it's just outlining those policies that every department in the state has to have them. Does that help? Okay. I can get with you two later, and if you want to read the whole thing, I said, it should have been out there, yeah.
Number one, I have never had any contact with the police department, one way or the other, other than about a month ago. A flag was stolen out of my yard. We had the license number, 373 VHC, or burgundy or red GMC. They ran it on the spot, gentleman in the car. He said it's, it appeared to be someone from out of town, southern Minnesota. And they said, I'll get back to you tomorrow or the next day. That didn't happen, about three, four days later, we contacted, I believe, may have called here or something, but anyone, officer stopped by, spoke with my wife, he said it was an incomplete license number. I question that. Is it just too trivial when something like this is stolen? Now, I don't care, I don't care what political party you're from, if I see what my, the person that I do not agree with, if I see something stolen out of their yard, I will call the police. But I, I'm a little disappointed that this wasn't followed through with. Again, that license number is, is, uh, 373 VHC. And it's a GMC, and the neighbor ladies, ladies, there was two of us here, they, they ripped the flag out of my yard.
Thank you, Alan.
Yeah.
I'll move to approve the policy, police policy addition for the eyewitness identification procedures.
Second.
Any questions on the motion, counsel? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? That motion carries. Resolution requiring squad car purchase.
Mayor, I'll move the, uh, resolution as presented by staff.
Second.
Questions on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Approve polit, E10, approve policy and procedure for streetlights.
I'll move to approve the policy and procedure for streetlights as presented from Public Works.
Second.
Questions?
Question. I'm looking at the third page. And I understand that the streets established prior to September of this year will have the street lighting added at no assessed cost to the property owners. In other words, they get it without any assessed cost. But if there's another street coming up in the future, that will be assessed. It seems kind of like a two-tiered plan, some people get assessed, other people don't get assessed for the same thing. And I'm just wondering what the Public Works were thinking when they, when they, uh, did it like that.
We looked at this, one of the things going forward has to happen, um, is Public Works and P&amp;Z have to work together. And if you're going to build a new, if you're going to have a builder come in or anybody come in and build a new PUD or something, they have to build the roads up to our specs and then they turn it over. If the people in that, or if that builder is going to put street lighting in at that time, they would put it in. And then when it gets turned over to the city, like the roads and streets and there, it would become the city's responsibility to maintain it. If they decide, if, as long as they are made aware of that, they have to be made aware of that by P&amp;Z and Public Works have to work together, they're made aware of that upfront. And if they decline to put street lighting in, okay. But if the people are going to come later, such as Wolf Chase, um, and we want it, then we'll put it, we can get it in, but it's going to be at their cost. So really has to be an upfront thing, saying if you want electric, if you want lights in, let's put them in now with you, you know, you put them in now so that they meet our specs. The other thing in the policy, Don, is, um, if they want special street lighting,
I understand.
that, you know, we'll provide what MPNL or Crowing Power provides us. But if they want special street lighting or specialty lights, they're going to be on the hook for that cost, because some of that gets really expensive.
But Crowing, uh, and Minnesota Power, uh, are going to have an energy charge for each light. And it seems the way this is written, that the older streets, the city will absorb the energy charge and not be, not go to the homeowner, but the new streets, it will go to the homeowner.
Tom, I don't think that was the, once the lights are turned out, the, the lights will be installed.
Right.
Once they're installed and everything is inspected and it's all up to the proper spec and everything's good, it, just like the streets, it becomes ours. So then they will, there will be a separate meter there running those lights. And that will become our responsibility, the electrical.
So we're going to take over the energy charge for the whole city when we put in the streetlights for the?
Just for the streetlights, not the?
Right, right, for the streetlights.
And a lot of those lights in the future, well, who knows what the future holds. Right now, they're currently pretty much using, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, but they're still pretty much using either mercury vapor or high-pressure sodium. They haven't all gone to LEDs, although some will. I, I would assume at some point in the future, LEDs will get to the point where they'll be the thing, I guess, you know, but right now.
The way I read it, it didn't seem fair that some people would be, uh, paying for it and some people would not.
Well.
John, could you verify for Don his question and concern in the paperwork that you, you're most familiar with this, obviously, or which?
Don, are you looking at number 13? Is that, it says utility, all utility costs for specialty street lighting may be assessed? Is that what you're picking up on? I'd have to ask Tom to maybe speak that. I mean, maybe would be a, that's just, we have the option, maybe if there's a specific instance that we want to have the ability.
I, I'm not against street lighting, if it's done properly, I'm just wondering who's going to pay for it and who's not going to pay for it, that's all.
What I was trying to do, Don, with that, um, line is, except that the, the street lighting is provided by the utilities, the standard street lighting is the base. And, but we've had some neighborhoods that are maybe a little more affluent that want a higher grade of lighting, that maybe uses more power.
That's fine.
And that was what, all I was trying to do was give us an opportunity to not, uh, accept all of the cost if, if they wanted something over and above what was provided by, uh, Minnesota Power or Crowing.
Well, I'm still reading it differently, but it's.
I, I would agree, it seems a little confusing. You know, and one part is just, is simply that in, and I don't know if we can state it, but what's, what's the quote-unquote base model? You know, I mean, you know, so if people come in and they say, well, what's, what's your standard? what's your standard and so on? We should, I think we should have a base model. This is what we, this is what we are looking for.
We could do that, but I think the list would be quite extensive. There's several, you know, there's probably thousands of different kinds of street lighting that could be made available. Basically, when you go to Minnesota Power, kind of like John said, there's two options, although I think the first one is going away, and that's just a very basic streetlight pole that runs on mercury vapor. The other one is also a very basic pole that runs with an LED lamp.
So would it be possible, then, to stipulate in here that depending on, the base model is the power company that you have in your neighborhood? What they provide at that time is the base model, and then lay that, state that in here?
Sure. I mean, you could, I felt like that was kind of what was implied, but maybe it needs to be stated more clearly.
Yeah. I mean, one thing that happens over the years is, I'm gone, you're gone, everybody's gone, and somebody goes, not quite sure what they meant. And then the builder comes along and says, well, I think it means this, and we can't, we can't show otherwise. So I just, it's just a clarification thing. You know, what is the base model? If the base model is whatever the power company is providing at that time, then let's just put that in there in words, and that's what they get. They want something different than that, then I think we've got it covered.
I'm not against street lighting, and I'm certainly not against specialty lighting if they want to do that. It's just that the language in item number nine, it says, "All costs will be assessed to the affected properties." And when you assess something to the affected properties, the city isn't picking that up, the person is picking it up. So I was just wondering if there's a two-tiered system here.
I think what we're looking at there, Don, or the way we understood it at Public Works, was any new street project. So all of the costs of the street project from A through Z, which then the lighting would be included in, that builder is most likely going, I, you know, I would assume that they would, well, it's going to, you know, it's going to be reflected in the cost of the homes they build, the lots they sale and stuff. So that's kind of, you know, but after 2016, or September 6th, this, today.
It's a minor point, but after everything is put in, and you turn the light on, and it works straight at night, there's an energy cost that comes every quarter. Who pays that?
If it's on a city street, the city will.
Okay.
Unless...
It doesn't necessarily say it. It said, "Cost will be paid by the affected properties."
So there again, I think we could add a few words, clarify that, so that builders, citizens, future council, future staff knows exactly what was being referred to at that, at this time.
All initial step costs that...
Well, in essence, it would be, you'd get your, you'd get whatever the power company's providing at the time.
Yep.
Then you, the developer would pay for, you know, all the, for the, for the materials and labor to install it. And, you know, once it's operating, then the city will be responsible for the monthly or quarterly lighting.
All costs to install and bring to make operational?
The cost of the builder or developer.
No, I think, I would think if there's any questions about that, Mr. Allen probably has some, they've probably been involved with enough of that wording for things like that to verify or help. If there's anything?
As long as everybody agrees on what it says, I'm fine.
Really, all we were trying to do, Don, was, previous developments didn't have the opportunity to say yes or no to street lighting when they were built, such as Wolfchase. We're saying that any new development that comes forward will be presented, the idea that you can have street lighting, but it has to be presented at the time developments build.
Yeah. And I, I don't, I think we're probably all on the same page with, with it just maybe a little bit more clarification for people is, is all that's being talked about.
Sure.
So we should probably...
We can make those additions and then bring it back next month.
Yeah, we should probably table it and just tweak it, and then bring it back and...
You don't need to bring it to the community again. Just make those tweaks.
Sure.
Because we agree, and now then it's clarified, so like they say.
Okay, cool.
Motion in second.
I was going to say, we have a motion in a second on the...
I'll resend my motion.
Okay.
You can do it then. I'll withdraw the motions.
Okay. It's tabled, tabled till next month. Item E-11, resolution adopting city fee schedule.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Jacobson.
Gone through. I only have one question. At the bottom of the first page, petition to vacate public highway, street, alley, et cetera, $2,500 for a permit?
Yep. So, so current is 500. Trying to avoid the needing to go back and be reimbursed for legal fees or other fees like that. This would more than cover that. And it really would, in my opinion, put, make the, have that person make the decision if it's really that important to them. Because the processes we've gone through recently, it's, it's lengthy, and there's a lot to it. And there's a lot of committees involved, and there's frustration on the part of that person. And as much as I tried to explain that, I, it just felt like that would be a, this is the fee, and that's it from the city, and it would cover everything, and it'd be done. So...
Is this writing for the petition? Somebody comes in and petitions for it, they have to spend $2,500. That's what you're saying?
Well, and, and we would, I mean, if it was incomplete, or if, if something just really wasn't working for that, I mean, we'd deal with that and, you know, return their money. But if the process actually started and was going to go through the, the entire thing, that was what I was thinking, the way I was thinking about it.
As opposed to what we would, the city would do at estimated cost?
So currently, we have a $500 fee, and then we bill the applicant for any out-of-pocket legal engineering, publication, mailing costs, and things like that. And the last couple we've had have been close to $2,000, all said and done.
There's going to be an item on the, our agenda next month about easement over on Camp Lincoln Road, goes, goes down to the lake, 60, 60-foot wide, 66-foot wide. That's petition to vacate an easement. Would, would those, those people have to bring in the $2,500 before we can act, then, if we...
No, they've already paid their $500 fee. They will be billed any out-of-pocket costs per our current practice. But no, they won't have to pay this fee.
Would anybody else come in later?
Any future applications, yes.
Would it be reasonable? I mean, I definitely haven't really wrapped my head around it, but it would be reasonable to, instead of 2,500? Well, the issue is, if you set it, if you set a number, then it's maximum. If it goes over that, then the city pays for it.
Correct, yes.
If it's under that, the citizens pay more than they would need to. I mean, I understand that's, you know, citizens, citizens could be frustrated, but yet it seems like with the, with the right amount of conversation with them and laying it out, it might be better leaving it the way it is. But that's my take. I mean, I don't know, does anybody want to pay 2,500 if you got a $1,500 bill, or, you know, I mean, that's, it's, I understand, it's not necessarily easy, and people, people want to know, and, but yet, or we could maybe give, give them the option. You need to pay 2,500. If it comes in less, then you're paying 2,500, or you can, or you can 500 to get it started, and then pay what, pay what the costs are. I don't know.
Well, what Jenny, what Jenny was saying is that they would charge 2,500, but if you didn't spend that, you would rebate back to the people if you didn't spend 2,500. That's what I understood you to say.
I think we could do that. That would be similar to when we escrow for a TIF project or something, right, Tom? That would be the same thing. We, we want to upfront amount to make sure that they are committed to it.
There are lots of situations where there may be some circumstances where you decide to forgive some portion of the fee schedule, a lot of the amount. Maybe just call this an initial deposit against...
Okay, yeah.
That's, that seems like a, like a good way to handle it.
And that way, then, there's, there's the ability to have the discretion to peel it back if it doesn't come to that, or, but also still not tap it at that.
Yes, certainly. If there was some reason that it was going to be additional, we'd say we have to pause until we get another check to cover that. Okay, that's, that's a great suggestion. Thank you. So we'll call it a deposit to initiate the process?
Sure.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so are we approving this, or are we going to wait for a wording change?
Well, I, I'd move that we approve it with the wording change that we discussed.
Second.
Any other discussion, ideas, or options that council has about this? Hearing none. We'll take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion then carries. Item E-12, approved data, data practices policy update. And I'll go right to Mr. Jacobson, because if anybody's going to have a question, it'll be Don, and, but if anybody else has questions, please.
Am I being targeted here, or what?
No, actually, you, there's those little details you usually study pretty well, so it's actually a compliment.
Well, I didn't like the red, but other than that, it was fine.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion, then, or somebody else?
I'll move that we approve the data practices policy update as presented.
Second.
That was John.
Yep.
I don't want my name on it.
Actually, tie goes to Jonathan, so he can, he can pick, he can pick. Any questions regarding this? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Memo from City Administrator Jenny Max regarding CARES funding and accept quote from Digital Horizons for council chambers improvements.
So if you recall, last month, we discussed the fact that the city received $155,000 in CARES funds, and that's two, two things. One, we weren't going to spend all of that on COVID-related expenses. And so last month, the council approved that we would send ultimately whatever the amount that we don't spend, specific to our needs, we would send that to the county for, to use in their grant program. But then we wanted to follow up this month and talk about what potential uses that we would have for these funds outside of the supplies and the things that we have spent money on thus far to date. So I have an updated spreadsheet for you. I believe it's the second page. I initially had included council iPads as an option, depending on if we would have to go back to any virtual meeting setting. I did take the, those off this spreadsheet, just based on feedback from the council, that, that probably wasn't a necessary or purchase you were interested in doing. The other things I took off were the concrete pads for the picnic benches we spoke about last month, and the parks' online registration software. I still think that would, that would be a great addition for us, but we just haven't done enough homework yet or research on it. So we're, we're a little ways out, and a great project for our new parks director to jump into for this next year. So that really leaves, we're, I'm including supplies, making sure all of our departments are fully stocked as needed for a year, or as best as they could guess getting through the next year, including some staff technology improvements. We should be now pretty much set with all of our office staff with laptops, and the webcams and the technology. They need to work virtually if and when needed. And then we, I did update our year-to-date costs that we have spent. Last month, it was 22,000, and this month, it's, it's 26. To be honest, actually, it's probably a little redundant in the supplies line, because I know we have spent some money to get our supplies ordered, and that might be reflected in that 26,900. But it's a ballpark, really, for the council. The big question I have for you tonight is the council chambers' audiovisual improvements. We received quotes from Digital Horizons, Marco, and Excel companies. That is the third page in your packet. Digital Horizons came in just under 30,000 at 28,963.55. Marco was 47,000, and Excel was 59,000. That would include all new microphones. It would include an 85-inch hi-def TV that would replace the projector. There would be a TV, 55-inch TV up here facing the council to help provide better visual for the council, improvements in our speakers, and then making sure all the technology is integrated for us to, to use that, to continue to livestream and do those things, to provide that access to the public.
Does it include better audio, so that the people out in the audience can hear better?
We actually will need to, I don't believe so. We, we've had a couple of, we've had a handful of conversations with all of these vendors. We would like to, we will ensure that there's adequate audio out in the atrium. The speakers themselves are very inexpensive, so that would be probably a few hundred dollars addition to this, to make sure that that's correct. So we didn't ask them to update their quote based on that, but yes, that is a part of the plan to make sure that's taken care of. So I'm looking for feedback, questions, certainly feedback on if you'd like to move forward with this. And a big question that I'd like to get feedback on is, currently, the quote is for improved microphones with a similar style, the gooseneck wired. Do you want wireless microphones? Something that you would probably clip around your ear, so you're mobile, so when you're sitting this way, people can still hear you. Otherwise, ultimately, the impact, the result is still the same. You have to speak right into the microphone for people to hear you.
The only problem with wireless is they run on batteries.
Correct.
And you have, batteries go bad, and you have to... I, I would rather have hardwired. I think it's more reliable than batteries, but that's a personal opinion.
I, you know, and I appreciate and understand. I, myself, I tend to think the wireless, because, yeah, there's batteries. We can have extra batteries here on the counter. But one of the complaints that we, well, I'm not going to say complaints. One of the concerns we've had is, and, you know, as a council member, it's hard to always sit forward. Sometimes you want to sit back and, you know, relax a little bit, and all of a sudden, you're not heard very well. And then somebody's, you know, not hearing. I, but I think the, I think the wireless is a nice way to go. And we don't use them that much, so that could be good and bad with the batteries. But if we have a few extra batteries around, and maybe we look at a model where we can change them out real quick or something, you know?
Well, there may, and there may be some, I don't know. There may be some that just come with a recharging. You know, I know, like our headphones at work, I just put on a little clip at night, and it recharges. So, and, and the charging station's hardwired in. I don't know if that's an option.
Sure. Yeah.
Another question that I, that I have Jenny and I, I don't want this to come across in an insulting way, but because I'm sure you've probably done this, but have you, have you been talking with other communities to see what things they're kind of looking at, and see if there's something, something we've missed, feel like, oh, you know, yeah, well, what about that, or something? Have you, have we done much of that yet?
With regards to audiovisual here, or just CARES funds in general?
CARES funds in general, is what I was, what I'm thinking.
I would say the, the biggest, well, a couple things, I guess. There are some communities looking at improving access to their building, the security, being more easily able to open, like open doors, and, you know, without maybe having to pull handles and things like that. So looking at some of those things. We had a...
We had a fairly lengthy conversation at one of, at our league workshop, roundtable discussion about whether or not CARES funds could be used for public safety. There's the school of thought that this clearly is, falls in line under that category. And then there's also concern that the personnel, the, the language it says personnel has to be dedicated for the purpose of COVID response. And for me, I have a hard time saying that anyone really is dedicated to that. I mean, I've certainly spent hours doing policies and things like that, but is that still my primary job? I don't know. So there's a little bit of a, well, I, you know, you hope you make the best decision with whatever is best for your community. Every, every city's a little bit different in that way. But that certainly is something that uses up the funds very quickly, is if you were to apply it to, say, your police department, or if you have a public safety, in the broader sense.
Right.
Right.
So what, so question is then regarding what you just said. Have you, have you calculated and put in some time, labor time for your investment in this? I mean, sure, it's your job, but it's, it's something that is not,
Nor, the normal part of the job?
It's outside of your normal work.
Yeah.
You know, this, the whole COVID thing is outside of everybody's norm, so that might be one area to take a look at, and if there's other staff or something, possibly that. But my, yeah, my, kinda my main question was just, and I kinda presumed, because you usually do that sort of thing, but just kicking the tires around with other people and see what, you know, see what-
What ideas they have, because, yeah, absolutely, yep, yep.
And, you know, I also wanna clarify, because I didn't catch it myself real clearly, but you had, when you first started out, you had made, you had made reference that we would not be using all of the funds and that we would be returning some.
Sure.
When I heard you say it, it, I couldn't really clarify which way you said it, but I, I knew what you meant, because we, we've talked about it before. So, so just for clarification, and it's obviously, it shows here on paper too, but right now, it looks like we won't be using anywhere near all of, all the funds that would be available if we had just right, just cause to use it.
And that was certainly, hopefully, I, I, I got the, an accurate sense from the council last month that you would like to see money sent to the county to participate in that program as a benefit to our local businesses and nonprofits. So definitely got that sense from the council, which is why I took some of the items off and tried to focus in on, on the, the real needs. And then what I think would be a great improvement for the council proceedings, for all of our committees, and hopefully the public would be able to see more. One thing I didn't mention, we, we'd have a, a very nice camera installed in the back, so we would see the whole room, including the speakers or presenters, so that would be a part of it as well.
Sure. Okay, uh, just one other thought that I, that I had in the past and haven't brought up, not related to CARES, but related to audio. If, if we need to look to do some more sound detonating in here with some softer materials to help with any echoing and, and so on, that's something we may want to consider, because that certainly makes it harder for people to hear.
Certainly.
If the acoustics aren't real well, so.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think we got the sense from any of the vendors, that was a big problem, but certainly,
Okay, well-
Just to keep in mind. Yeah, they all came here, they all looked at everything, so that they knew the scope of, and what the project would be like.
Good.
Yeah.
That's, I'm glad to hear that they were here and actually.
They're looking at wires and they're, you know, seeing where the stuff is running and, yeah.
They're doing their thing.
Scratching their head going, hmm, this is interesting, so.
Yeah, okay. So you're just looking for input, or do you, are you actually looking for, it does say action motions.
It does, yes, I would, I would appreciate the council's decision from the council on if you'd like to move forward with this quote from Digital Horizons, and then clarifying the question of the wired or wireless microphones.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we accept the documentation on the CARES project that the city administrators laid out for us, purchasing the items that she stipulated, including the, taking the quote from, excuse me, Digital Horizons. I would even, and I would add in my motion, that I would leave it up to the vendor and staff to decide whether they feel wireless or wired microphones would be best. I mean, I, I can let them look at that, I have no option, I don't, it doesn't matter to me, I like wireless too, but.
And if I can just add, instead of twenty-eight thousand nine hundred, it would be thirty-three thousand if we went wireless. Just so you have a cost difference.
Okay. So that would,
I would just-
I would stay with the wired, my motion would include just as presented with wired, hardwired. I'd like to see as much money get to the vendors and people in the community as we can.
Second.
You are seconding?
I will second, yeah.
Second by Jacobson. Any question on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I would like to see wireless.
They do have advantages, but mine always falls often to the sink or the lake.
E14, accept annual evaluation for city administrator Jenny Max. Is there a motion to accept that?
I'll move to accept the annual performance review and recommendation, or set increase for Jenny Max. Second.
Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. E15, recommendation. Oh, yeah, we did, that one's done, thank you. Old business, item F1, community survey regarding council meeting schedule.
If I could just add very quickly, last month, Mr. Jenkins provided me the list of names he had obtained on the petition. I sent everyone on those lists a letter informing them of the survey on Survey Monkey and asked that they go online to complete that, just so that we could keep the information in one place. I did receive a handful of new responses since then, but I just wanted to let the council know that that's what I did in between last month's meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll make a motion that we change the meeting days for city council meetings from Wednesday to Tuesday, beginning in January two thousand and twenty-one. And I'll have a comment if there's a second.
I'll second.
And just to clarify, that would be still the third week, the third, so it'd be the third Tuesday of the month? Instead of the third Wednesday of the month?
That's fine, we'll just move it to Tuesday instead of Wednesday.
Okay, okay.
And in the past, I've been a little reluctant to make any major changes with so few people answering the survey. And the last number I saw was about twenty-three, twenty-four people. But I also know that everybody here says they didn't have a problem with doing that. And if it makes some, some people in some of the churches who seem to feel that they want us to change, I'm willing to try that and see how it works out, we can always change it back if it doesn't work out.
Thank you. Any others? All those in favor then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion does carry. Item F2, American Tower First Amendment to site lease agreement. We're gonna table that until October?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Two, three, four.
Two, three, and four, please.
Oh, yes, okay, so items F2, 3, 4, and 5 are tabled until October meeting?
I did have-
Reason for that?
I didn't, so F5, I, I did provide and updated to the policy if the council would like to discuss it tonight, or we can keep it October. I just wasn't able to get it into the packet prior to last Friday. And 2, 3, and 4, Tom and I are still working on the site lease for number 2. And I think hopefully, timing now is good for 3 and 4, we were looking to schedule workshops for those items. And hopefully now, now that summer, through Labor Day, it's quieter, we can have that opportunity to do that. So I will work with the council to do that over the next three, four weeks.
We'll look forward to that. Council reports.
Are we gonna go ahead with number 5, Mr. Mayor? It is, you were given it, or did you still wanna table that till October?
I don't know, well, here it says tabled until October, so.
That's fine.
On the agenda.
Okay.
I, I can just, I think I noted the, one addition to the policy, just for your reference, when you're looking at it, is the last page, and there's a training section that was discussed by the council, that that would be something you'd like to see. So please take a look at that and let me know if you have any feedback.
Council reports, mayor, and the first is mayor, I've actually said all I wanna share tonight, so council members?
Well, Mr. Mayor, as you know, there's an election coming up in a couple of weeks, and I see that there has been scheduled a, a meeting over in the community center next Tuesday, at what, seven o'clock? Where all the candidates for the various city offices will be there and answering questions. And just to let people know that, and if they're interested, come on over and listen, ask questions.
Gary?
Nothing.
Mike?
Nope.
John?
The only thing I have is, when I was listening to you, and I got the copy of that, of what you gave us earlier today, there's a number of things in there that you said we were aware of. As a member of the Personnel Committee, I don't recall us meeting and discussing any of those. So I was just curious, maybe I can get a clarification from somebody.
Sure, let's get-
Because I haven't, I have no documentation on it, and I haven't, I know we haven't had any personnel meetings on it. So I was, I'm just kinda caught off guard and kinda surprised today, it was news to me, so.
Well, some things are, okay. If you'd like to get together, give me a call, my schedule is greatly freed up, I'd be glad to get together with you, thank you. We have our dates, upcoming dates for meetings, please make note of that. And last is a motion to adjourn.
Yep.
Second?
Yep and a yep. Okay, thank you, gentlemen.